Well, it's not so much that nobody else knows, but nobody else will take that responsibility.
Yeah.
Okay, it's six oh thirty-five, let's call meeting to order. And I think we just have the ag on the agenda right now.
That's right, so review and recommendations of the RA and A G zoning district update.
Okay, anyone have comments regarding that map or any of the...
I have comments regarding the map, well, I have comments regarding both.
All right, go ahead Larry.
As far as the, uh, the planned uses for the ag district and the RA, uh, I think they're pretty much in line with what we talked about. I read through it, I tried to find, you know, to look and see if there was anything that was, that had gone in there. Uh, I'd say if anything was changed, it might have been some of the recommendations of the ag committee. But I didn't find, I didn't think that those changes were substantial, and I'm, you know, opening this up to anybody else. But I do think that with regard to the map, we could go back to earlier discussions, and at one point in time, we had gone through discussions on how far on the east side of thirty-four B to, uh, to make the, uh, art, uh, the, uh...
RA?
RA. And, uh, at one time, the planning board had said it should be three hundred feet. And, uh, the thought was at that time, New York state law allows a property owner to petition to have, if he has, say if there's a property owner there that goes beyond that three hundred feet, they can petition, if I'm, if I am correct John, uh, to have their whole contiguous lot put in that zone. If they're happy with the three hundred feet, then it stays the three hundred feet. Then further discussion went on to the point that, well, you know, if there's a lot on that side of the zone, that whole lot should be included. And then it comes down to site plan review as to what can be put on all the portions of that lot. Which with the, with what I've seen of the new site plan review ordinance, I'm fairly comfortable with that. So it would be my suggestion to go ahead and go to the point where all the land on the east side of thirty-four B should be in R two, even if, even if it's...
R two or RA?
RA, sorry, you're right. I'm getting confused, thanks Tom. Uh, then, uh, none of those lots extend miles into the, into the ag district. Probably the largest one is five hundred acres. And it becomes the, uh, at that point, development or building on that lot become the providence of site plan review and the code enforcement office with regards to what can be done. So with, with the fact that we still have site plan review, I wouldn't see any problem with having those lots included.
Right, and Larry, you and I were at the ag committee meeting.
That's correct.
And the ag committee expressed they wanted all the land on the east side of the road from the county line to the school to be in RA, is what I remember.
Yeah, not, not all the land, but the land, the lots that are immediately contiguous with the road. That was, that was the sense that I got.
And C D seemed to, seemed to be receptive of that, and I thought she was going to make that change. Now, this map doesn't reflect that.
Well, probably she's had other things on her mind in the, in the two weeks since the...
Well, one of the issues with that is the code revision committee that comes up with the, what gets put forward to the town board. So this, this board shot, the ag committees, and their shot as well, to talk about things that they want changed. But it's the code revision committee that made, came up with this product.
Well, it's, we just, I disagree.
Yeah.
And I agree with the ag committee.
I, I do too.
And that's why, this by the way, is why the town asked for an ag committee, because they wanted knowledgeable input. To ask for that input and then ignore it would seem to me, to be disingenuous.
I, I think the town board has to, it has to be expressed to the town board. I don't remember how, how the committee decided, but the town board needs to know that the map doesn't reflect what the ag committee had voted, I think they actually voted on it, I think, didn't we?
Yes.
We voted on it and said it should be included.
All right, noted. That'll be one of the comments we put forward from tonight.
Yeah, do we, do we need to make a motion to have this comment go forward, or are you just gonna take care of that?
Uh, I'll note it right now, and then perhaps at the end of the meeting, we can sum it up as a, you know, everything, unless this is the only thing that anybody has.
Okay.
I, I just have a question where it's, um, I don't even know where to put it. It's by, um, so it's the end of Conlon Road, and it's where the red is, so the red, I think, is town land. So is the town land RA, and then it has RA, AG, R three, so I'm a little confused about where... What is what? And that's, that little section.
Red, red's B one, it's not labeled.
Yeah, oh, okay.
B one.
And, and it's, if it's ag, then it should be green, and if there's none, there's no green there, but maybe the ag mean it should be over in the green section.
Yeah, it should be on the other side of the street.
Yeah, so I was just confused about what is what there.
Yeah, that is, that is correct, John. I mean, uh, that's terrifically confusing, the way that that's shown. Because it shows an RA there where there is no RA.
You have to be a little more, um...
Do you want me to show you?
See, the big swoop?
Let me put it up on here.
Okay.
We had the same problem for the Rockville Road, where it has AG in the RA colored area. That AG should be taken out of there.
Actually, actually, the AG's in, in R three, in, in the area that is R three.
In the town center areas where I'm looking at.
Oh, okay, wait a minute.
This AG should be moved.
Just a second.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That AG should be moved, and this AG should be moved.
And the colors are all the same, R, you know, RA, R three.
Yeah, they are definitely too close.
Yeah, too close.
I think I've got it doped out. Uh, the G and the A on the map that we've got on the table here...
Yeah.
Cover are, are placed physically on the area that is RA. The...
Brown, R three.
Because this... Here.
It's brown and the orange.
Hang on, here comes G B.
It's a little brown, gray around there. It's hard to see because...
Yeah, I can't...
So, yeah, they need to start picking a couple more colors that...
Okay.
Really differentiate.
This is, this is, right?
See, right there?
Yeah.
G and A are sitting on top of this, which is RA.
Right, and we have the same thing right here too, right?
Yeah.
So now that AG is in the RA there.
Yeah, and this ag is actually sitting on R three. The ag starts...
Oh, it is, okay.
The ag starts on Buck Road.
Right, yeah.
All right, so it's just...
So this, this should be moved.
Yes.
It's confusing, yeah.
Yeah.
You guys were just talking about the symbology.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is very confusing, because if we do this as gospel, it ain't. I mean, just the fact of having those labeled in the wrong place can, uh, and not straightening it out...
And then...
Can cause a whole lot of confusion when the, when the ordinance is passed.
Right, and then also in the, um, there's, there's RA here at this intersection, correct?
Yeah, that little brown right there.
Right here, and there's, and there's no, it isn't called out with, with RA, which should be...
On Jerry Smith Road.
Jerry Smith.
Well, I guess, guys, it would probably be better, in this case, placing the symbology to just remove the large RA, AG, that was really just...
That's correct.
We'll just remove all of those, and we'll just rely on the colors, I think, because then you won't be obscuring parcel lines, you won't be obscuring zone boundaries.
Yeah, other than if you can make the colors a little bit.
So if, if we look at a zoning map that doesn't have the aerial underneath it, it's probably a lot more divided.
Yeah, 'cause like, if you look at RA and R three, it's almost the same color.
That's the, uh, recommended changes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, or one, two, three.
So it would be a lot more divided without those.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm sorry, I'm having technical issues here, for some reason, this just doesn't...
That's, that's...
But to be perfectly frank, I don't see a whole lot of difference between this and that.
Yeah, there's not a lot of difference, they were, that's, that's, that was the point making it, Larry, we thought that was pretty close.
So if, if, if we do that, to remove that confusion, then the only problem I have with the map is that I think that the, uh, opinions and desires of the ag committee and the planning board should be considered a little more heavily by the zoning change committee or...
Well, let me, let me take a...
It's on board now.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me take a poll real quickly. So Larry, Larry would like the, all the roads, or all the parcels on the east side of the road to be included in RA, and I'm supportive of that.
Thirty-four B, north of the gorge.
Yeah.
And so, any, does anyone...
I'm not sure a whole parcel...
Only the first contiguous lots, not the whole, not the whole property.
Right, not the whole parcel.
That would follow the lot lines, in other words, we go like this.
And it looks like most of these do follow the lot lines.
Except some of them are cut out.
Ah, okay.
See, this one is cut out, this one is cut out.
That might be cut out.
Uh, this one is cut out, this one.
But should there be something about just, what is it, three hundred feet?
No, it's the, we, uh, we talked to the ag committee about that, and the ag committee wants the whole contiguous lot, not the whole parcel.
Ah, so be RA.
So every, every lot that has frontage on thirty-four B, the entire lot would be RA.
RA. That's correct.
As long as it's within the water district there?
Regardless of the water district, because the other thing that happens there is that the code enforcement office gets to say whether there's enough water there, when somebody makes an application.
Sure.
So we're covered. Because the statement was made at the meeting that the town engineer didn't plan for the water system to cover a whole huge area. Well, it's not covering a whole huge area, but at that point, if it becomes an issue, site plan review and the code enforcement department can take care of it. I can't see anybody...
So that would preclude somebody from, who has a pretty large chunky of turning it all into a subdivision.
That's correct.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't, so that would be, you'd be...
If they don't have enough water.
If they don't have enough water.
They wouldn't be, well, they could, but they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be allowed to, uh, put a water district extension in there without the express approval of the town board.
Yeah.
They have to provide their own well.
Still work with RA.
That, most, most of these parcels are under an ag exemption with the assessment office.
Ah.
And so if you develop it, there's a penalty.
Okay.
What is it, five, five years, five years back penalty, plus interest, and if you don't notify the assessment office, I think they can add another, there's another additional penalty on top of that. So the penalty is so severe...
Yeah.
That I doubt anyone would take forty acres and develop it into a subdivision. It just wouldn't be economically feasible. So there is a protection in place for most of these parcels to, already through the ag exemption, to protect them from development.
What this simply does is it allows somebody that owns property to, to say, break that property into a lot on the road and sell it as a residential lot.
Right, or, or the use, you know, if, if there's an, the whole parcel is under an ag exemption, it may be feasible to, to sell off one acre or two acres and pay that penalty, but you wouldn't do that on forty acres or whatever it would be, it just, I don't think it'd be feasible. So I think there's already protection in place for that, along with what Larry's saying with the, with the site plan and the engineers and all that, the wa, the amount of water, et cetera.
Yeah, now, let's remember one thing. Even if that isn't done, anybody that's, if those were to remain ag, then any of those property owners can develop that into an ag-supported business and put a huge sum there. Because that is still allowed for the ag district.
Creamery.
A creamery, uh, uh, cidery.
Yeah.
So, um, there's, I'm sure there's landowners along here that have ag exemptions, but they're not in the ag zone. Correct? I'm guessing.
That's correct.
So the ag exemption has nothing to do with zoning.
Oh, I know, I know.
And although I don't disagree with Al, that it's certainly gonna be an economic, like, disincentive to take your land out of the agricultural assessment program, okay? Certainly, people do do it, that is how their land is developed, that's, that's how a bunch of lands, I believe, was already developed. So I, I disagree that it's an effective land protection, okay? Now, let me address something else. We haven't changed residential lots, residential density at all. That, that could happen under, under this current map that is in front of you, or if the boundaries changed, such as the board is suggesting, residential really hasn't been touched. There is just some commercial uses that have been changed. Um, so that's, that's really what you're talking about, is, is certain types of commercial uses.
Well, what we're also talking about is residential access on the front, on the frontage to the water district. So if I had that...
Under either schema, the A, the, whether it's in the AG zone or the RA zone, residential lots are still permitted.
Right, but residential lots wouldn't be allowed public water if they're in the AG district. That's, that's the way it was presented.
No, no, that's not true. If they're, if they're...
If you're within the district...
They can connect to the water.
Yeah, if you're within the district boundaries.
Right, but didn't the district lines, don't the district lines follow this?
Don't the water district lines follow this?
Yeah.
They follow it pretty closely.
No, I mean, that's what Lynn had a problem with, because I believe some of his parcels, where he was eligible to hook into the municipal water, and it's not included in these, in the RA up here in the northern part of the...
But the, the main, the main reason for, uh, for the consideration of remains, if that was the desire, that was the opinion of the ag committee. And that's why we have, supposedly why we have an ag committee, if we're really talking straight and not trying to make them feel good by giving them a, a fake responsibility. I would like to see their stuff taken as seriously as some of the other committees, the official committees.
Do you wanna pull the board out and see if the rest of the board endorses that, the recommendation to move all the parcels on thirty-four B, east, east of thirty-four B that touch thirty-four B into the RA zone?
So you wanna just do it as a show of hands, and is that fine?
Um, Al, one moment?
Yeah, sure.
Have you activated Dale as a voting member tonight?
No, I haven't, but...
Because we're...
Are we, are we actually gonna...
Well, I, I just wanna know...
I think a show of hands is fine, I don't think we need to...
That would be fine, yeah, just so I know that, you know, that the board agrees to move this forward to the town board, that's, that's...
So the question is, does the planning board agree with the ag committee that the parcels that touch the east side of the road, all the parcels that touch the east side of the road from the county line to the school should be included in the RA? That's what the ag committee is, is saying. Do we support that? So those that do, raise your hand.
There's actually not that many.
No, there's...
Those that don't?
Oh, sorry.
You do? So everyone, everyone agreed with that?
No, Tom doesn't.
Tom, and you disagree, or you don't wanna...
Well, there's some very large parcels that are gonna end up in RA that way.
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't know if that's, what was the original idea of having an ag zone? I mean, there's some that look like, you know, hundreds of acres.
Well, I, I think the biggest one is five hun, possibly five hundred acres.
Really? There's not, there's a parcel that, five hundred acres, it's right there?
Green size parcel there.
Oh, okay.
There are three north of Fener Road that might approach that.
A parcel, and then one two.
Yeah, I mean, see, we're, we're in a problem. I mean, I, I see what Tom is saying, we don't want all that acreage in, you know, but, but at the same time, you're penalizing the people who have a large acreage that have frontage along the road, so...
And there's, there's no reason to, to split, uh, the parcels and part of it as, as RA and part of it as...
That was, that was my suggestion at the ag committee meeting, but the sense of the ag committee was that they wanted the whole parcel in.
Well, I mean, they can still, um, even if it is in the ag, they could still build a lot, build a house on that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, so I, I don't understand why...
Well, there are uses that are allowed in the RA that you could make use of, especially with the road frontage on a major highway.
Right.
That would not be allowed in the ag zone.
So if somebody wanted to put up a, a restaurant, or a diner, or something of that effect, on these parcels that are in the, uh, in the AG zone, they wouldn't be allowed? Is that, that's correct, John?
I thought they were...
Ag-related education would be...
Well, they would be in the RA zone.
Like a creamery. Brewery, distillery. So you could do a brewery or distillery, a farm market, but, yeah, it doesn't look like you'd be able to do a restaurant.
Amusement facility, lodge, private club, medical plant, primary, secondary schools, retail service, general, cabin, those are all...
In the RA.
In the RA, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, lodge and private club.
So...
Contractors, landscaping, yard, communications towers, cemetery, yeah, there's quite a few things that are not in the ag that are in the RA.
And again, you know, if you, you compare that corridor to the corridor outside of Watkins Glen, that goes up along Seneca Lake with the wineries and breweries, there are restaurants along that corridor, it does enhance the tourism, you know, I, I, I don't see a, a restaurant being a negative in, along that corridor there.
Yeah, and it's really confining it to thirty-four B, because Auburn Road is pretty much ag, except...
But that puts you, I mean, that's, that's the corridor, that, that's the, that's the...
This is the tourism.
Tourism corridor, and that's where you would want a restaurant, along that corridor. And that would be complimentary, I think, to the corridor as well as to the tourism, as well as to the community, something like that.
So then to think about is, what attracts the tourism?
The wineries, the breweries, the view.
Sidereys.
Restaurants.
View, yeah, definitely restaurants.
Well, well, why, why are they coming there? What's the, what's the feature they're coming to see? Why are people...
Well, they're either...
There are non-spectacular...
They're either already going to a park, or they're already going to some kind of a brewery, a distillery, cidery, and then they've decided that, hey, we need a place to eat tonight, and so, or this afternoon, whatever.
With all due respect to the scenic byway people, along that stretch, there aren't the gorgeous views of the lake that there are from other points. Um, so the, any, any attraction there would be any ag business that we're, that was, that was, would be developed. Like, uh, a creamery, like a, uh, a distillery, a brewery, another winery, a cidery. Those, those kind of things are gonna bring people to stop. Another thing that'll bring people to stop, if they happen to be out for a drive, if there's a decent restaurant up there.
Well, don't forget too, we're talking about the east side of the road, so that's the uphill side. So if you develop and put your cidery up there on the hill, you're actually gonna get that view.
Yeah.
Potentially. Whereas, you know, on the, on the west side, there really isn't a lot of places to have it, much of the view, because the trees have grown so much.
Yeah.
So, so I think the board, our board, planning board recognizes the, the unfairness of, of the properties that have a large parcel, that have frontage along the road, but they all, we also recognize that we, we, you probably wouldn't like to see that whole parcel developed. So, again, it goes back to the...
I don't understand why it's not such a bad idea to split a parcel, so some of it's...
I, to tell you the truth, I don't either. Because that's what I propose.
It's very difficult to administer and legally questionable whether or not somebody...
They have a problem doing my ten acres.
That's because you know people.
I guess.
If this remained in the ag district, is there a, a process? I mean, could they go through the Z B A and get approval for putting in a restaurant?
They could come to the planning board and the town board and ask for a planned development area if they had a large enough, uh, proposal.
It's, it's tough getting a variance though, it's very, right? You, you were on the...
When you're on the, the Z B A, variances are supposed to be few and far between.
Yeah, they're supposed to be nearly impossible to get.
Yeah, and, you know, especially if you have odd-shaped lots that are not conforming, those kinds of things that historically...
Basically, there's no other use that you can take advantage of the property with under the, under the allowed zoning, really, than, than a use variance is pretty, should be out of the question, unless, so unless the zoning is depriving you of all beneficial use of the property.
I mean, it's, it's...
What about...
It's assumed that when you buy a property that doesn't comply, that it's a self-created issue, but really, it's a government-created issue, and they put the zoning in place and made your lot non-conforming, so. But, but this, this is totally different. I mean, here, if you're in one zone, and you don't wanna be in that zone, now's the time to try to be in that zone, because later on, I mean, that kind of a use variance, I mean, that's the whole idea behind different zones.
Right.
Because you're in this zone and this is not allowed.
Well, it's not like a landowner can come and petition and say, I wanna be in this zone or that zone. I mean, they don't have that option, right?
Deb, I feel as though you have a question on me.
The, the government isn't asking them to come and...
Yes, but they don't have the words.
Landowners to come in and say what they want.
Right, right, they're not getting, they're not getting their say.
You do too.
Part of that is, like Larry's saying, has been expressed from the ag committee.
But not every landowner is on the ag committee that's...
Right.
Well, I was, yeah, that's, that's what makes it more legitimate.
The, the RA gives me more options than the ag does.
Right, right.
And I can still get my ag exemption or keep it, and I can still do an ag use, but, you know, who knows what the future holds, and as this corridor continues to develop.
Well, I just wouldn't see, I wouldn't want this corridor to get bumped out like it already is, uh, Conlon.
Absolutely not.
No, and we, you know, again, I think we all recognize, we wouldn't like to see it go back, you know, the...
We don't want it to creep.
Three hundred, five hundred feet.
I like this one, um, large parcel here on Emmons Road, you see how that sticks up? I, I suggest that they follow that and don't go any farther than that. Because that one is the one that seems to penetrate the deepest into the, on the east
I don't think we're gonna come up with a, um...
I think that's our recommendation, is to follow what the, the ag committee said.
All right, so I think the majority of us would vote it to follow the ag committee, and would like to see from the county line to the school, all parcels that touch. We recognize that, if there was some way to prevent the entire, if it was a large tract of land, in other words, it was only developed, whatever was, four hundred feet back, or five hundred, or whatever it might be, a nominal distance back, as opposed to a thousand, two thousand.
And that might be a compromise, yeah, to split, split the parcels improvement, especially since they're, most of them are big, fairly big ones.
Even if they split them to the depth of that, that piece of property on Emmons Road, like you said.
Um, that'd give you kind of consistent...
Then you, then you have an issue, you really do have issues. Can, can, can somebody put a building on one portion of their park and can stormwater on the other? And there, there, there are issues with it, and it's just not easy to administer.
Well, you could go what, you could go fifty feet.
Yeah.
You could go fifty feet into the, um, into the other zone with, with the use from the other zone.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that seems fairly cut and... So, I mean, that seems fairly cut and dry to me, but I assure you, after 17 years or so.
That it's not.
Well, at least, this way, the committee will know there's an issue, and that we think that more attention should be paid to the wishes of the ag committee, and if there's some compromise that they feel they can live with, you know, so be it. I do have another question.
This is going right to the town board, Larry.
Okay. I do have another question, and it concerns the allowability of group, family, daycare home, and place of worship being allowed in the ag district, which follows state law, but only with site plan review. I wonder, does state law allow us the room to have that kind of review?
Absolutely, yeah.
For those two items?
Sure.
Because places of worship and group homes are supposed to be outside of zoning law.
The use itself, but not the circumstances by which it happened. So as you are, as you well know, that when you have something that's permitted by site plan review, it can happen there, and the assumption is there is some way by which it will fit in.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. I felt it needed to be brought up.
So I have a question on employment uses, rural enterprise. The word "small" is used a lot there. So this is Article 6 zoning uses of, what page is it on? It's on page, because they have numbered the pages. It's on page 3. And I'm wondering if somewhere they're going to define "small." So it says, rural enterprise is a manufacturing, construction, or service enterprise. So that's the type of enterprise it is. Types of businesses that are envisioned, under this definition, include small contractors, woodworking, metalworking, and other craft manufacturing, small auto repair body shops, small craft bakeries and food processors, small sawmills. Does not include retail operations. So I'd be interested in how they're defining "small," if they're thinking about looking at square footage, or.
People under 5'2".
Yeah, the number of employees, or kind of what, how they're defining "small."
Well, you know, it's like geography.
No, I think square footage is.
Well, for us, a small sawmill can take up a large square footage and still only be a small operation.
Okay, so a rural enterprise, I think that that was handled through the area frontage bulk height setback requirements?
So it does say subject to chapter 158, outdoor storage.
So if you look in your package, the page number, and it's got little gray squares around it, it'd be page 14, which is conveniently right where the staple is.
What package is that?
That's your planning board package.
We didn't get it.
Just online.
Just online, yeah.
I'm pretty sure we actually have it printed out for you as well.
I asked Heather today, and she said, no, they were not printed out. That's why I brought this.
Okay, well.
You're saying it's that same.
I can read it out to you, and so rural enterprise, the minimum lot size is 80,000 square feet. The maximum percentage of lot coverage, including parking, is 50%. We won't be to get into the terminology of that, but the maximum floor area, so the square footage of all structures or buildings, is 12,000 square feet. So they put that as a size on rural enterprises.
80,000 square feet is approximately 2 acres?
That's the minimum lot size.
Minimum lot size.
The maximum floor area of all structures is 12,000. So that's how that was.
So they're doing it by square footage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Makes sense. Because, yes, "small" is just a subjective term.
So.
It is, actually, you're right.
For instance, suppose, you know, a distillery, for instance, is, a small distillery is going to be larger than their 12,000 square feet.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to put one in, what is their recourse?
Well, it's not a rural enterprise.
Yeah, a distillery wouldn't be a rural enterprise, but if we said a farm brewery, ciderie, distillery, or winery, and there's no maximum floor area on that particular one, but let's say there was, because that's not, you didn't want to split areas.
Yeah.
Maybe you're looking for an area variance, which is not the same as a use variance. The criteria are not as strict. An area variance comes down to a balancing equation of basically what does it take to be a good neighbor, so. Either, you know, harmful impacts to the environment, impacts to neighboring properties, but none of those, the five balancing questions are exclusive. So if they say no to one of them, it doesn't throw the whole application out the way it would with a use variance, so.
Okay.
Area variances are balancing, and use variances are much more prescriptive.
So if the brewery, distillery, creamery, ciderie, winery are separate items, then what is included under the description of rural enterprise?
Dean just read it to you.
Okay, again, Dean?
Yeah. Manufacturing, construction, or service enterprises. The types envisioned would include contractors, woodworking, metalworking, and other craft manufacturing, small auto repair body shops, craft bakeries and food processors, and sawmills.
Oh, like.
Does not include retail operations.
Would you folks excuse me while I make copies for you?
Sure. And all of those would preface with.
Like John said, you know, if there was a pinch, they could go for an area variance.
Yeah, bakery, if it was a craft bakery, then would then feed retail. And let's say it was rural enterprise, allowed in the RA, but not the.
I could see a cabinet shop also being.
Yeah, see, rural enterprise is allowed in the RA, and is also allowed in the.
Dean, could you see it?
But in the RA, you would be allowed to have a retail, but in the ag, probably.
But suppose where I live, I'm in the ag, and that's where my cabinet shop is. Do I have to go?
You can have a retail showroom, I guess.
Can you have a website?
You don't need a retail showroom.
Yeah, all you do is a good website.
Oh, there are some- there are some things that people have to go hands-on. I don't know a lot of people that are going to pick furniture off a website.
Oh, you go right into their shop.
Do you do customer work?
No. Sure, absolutely. You might not like what you get. My statement about my cabinet shop was purely representational.
Ah, you're in your dreams.
In my dreams, yeah. However, we were the guy that has a cabinet, or used to have a cabinet shop in the ag, in what is now the ag area, right?
Who's that? Um, we don't know him well.
All you know.
Your brother-in-law.
Oh, Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah, he did.
In his basement. Temporary uses, motorcades.
There was another one on Lewis Road, too.
Motorcades, parades, and assemblies.
It's allowed use or not?
It's a temporary use that would be allowed in the ag zone.
Yeah.
Good.
I just.
Like I said, when I was going through those, I did have some questions, but they were pretty much like things that we talked about.
Let's see, in ag, retail garden center.
That's absolutely amazing.
I was thinking of like Grismore Farms, they have a retail section.
I was impressed by that.
Right, where you can buy the honey.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It happens less and less now, you know?
Yeah, we wouldn't want to preclude that from.
No.
Yeah.
Well, agriculture-related commerce is allowed by, right. That's a principal use.
Is that okay?
Subject to site plan review in the ag. But, so agriculture-related commerce and retail.
That's all fine there.
All that would be fine, but you can't just have any.
And that's streamlined site plan, whatever that is.
Right.
So did my.
Subject to site plan review for certain operations.
Again, I don't think it's fair to say this property on because it has a lot of papers, to lose his ability to go along the front here and to put up.
Quite a few pages. Well, ag is three.
Well, nobody wanted to watch the Georgia game.
Article 6 is 12 pages. Article 7 is 7 pages. It gets into upper yards and routine laws.
The SEC is feeling real bad. They only got one team in the.
The parcels down here should be in the RA zone. There's no reason to have a retail store, which is.
TCU.
TCU, yeah.
Down in here. It should stay along the corridor.
Well, I would like, I would be more, I know I don't want to cut the, it's a pain to cut lots, but I would be more in favor of.
Aside from the fact that my son's team got beat, I thought the orange bowl issue was a study, and I would.
Absolutely, that you want all of your retail and all that kind of stuff.
Tennessee. What if his colors are orange? I like Clemson. I'm a Clemson guy, but I'm not unhappy that Tennessee won because they've been struggling, running hard.
Or it should be R3.
Well, and I think these all.
Our team.
My youngest son's died in a Ole Miss Clemson fan, though.
So. Unfortunately, it's to the point where now it's up to the town board to vote on this, and I think they're just going, they're probably just.
They're going to do what they're going to do.
So, I mean, we could talk all day long, but I think we just make a general recommendation that that they're alerted to the fact that it doesn't support what the ag committee said, and the planning board feels that there is some unfairness to it, but at the same time, we recognize that we don't want the entire parcel being able to be developed in the rear, but it's unfair that their frontage is not included, and I don't.
Yeah, but the other thing is there are some fairly large parcels that are included in total. They go up way past the 300-foot line.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still think there should be an appeal process for individual landowners when a zoning change is made. Potentially, and make their individual viewpoint known that, hey, I don't want my parcel split, or I want my parcel.
We certainly heard that. We've heard that.
Two are fairly substantial, one is not. Yeah, but he also has one down.
Nobody ever asked me when they.
I personally.
10-acre parcel.
You should have the ability to say you want it inside the RA or inside the ag.
Where the heck is that?
If you'll yield to the town board or the county, if you want to be in the RA, and the rest of the.
It's not a huge one. It's right here, it's a 58 yard one. I think he has this one right here. Just salt the Jerry Smith.
Well, I'm wondering if there's other people here that wants to be in the RA.
That goes back up to the power line.
If they would have the road frontage on.
What's that?
Yeah, I do.
Right along here.
He just wants, he wants the ability, should something come up that he can develop a site plan along the main grid. Subdividing this residential blocks, which the town board wants to protect, which I understand.
That would be this one right here.
The guy across the road can put it in, but he can't? Why is that? That doesn't make any sense.
That one might be close to 400 acres.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we changed it all.
Thank you, Deb.
New zoning smell? Different than the car for a while.
I mean, I rented this online, but it was hard to read it.
I know, I couldn't get to all of it. All right, so folks, as far as the board is concerned, are you comfortable with what's here, or would you like more time to review this?
No.
No more time?
I think it's been worked over and worked over.
Okay.
I do like putting forward the recommendation that the ag committee would listen to more carefully, recognizing there are some difficulties, but the ag committee worked extremely hard to be summarily.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, also, there's a matter of credibility. If they're, you know, they've asked the ag committee to participate, and when they participate, if they're not listened to, that makes it a little more difficult to get participation.
In the future.
I guess that's my word for the day.
Well, they would listen to it. They would listen to it.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Dean? Dale? Tom?
I just have one small comment here on page 41, that they talk about deer fences allowed up to 8 feet, and I know in the university orchard and stuff like that, they recommend 10 feet for deer fences, so.
How many feet did you say?
What's that?
How many feet do they recommend?
10?
10, 10. If you look around the orchard there, they've got a 10 feet, yeah.
So you don't want your orchard ravaged.
And then you can add a foot if you want.
Additional foot of height is allowed.
Additional.
For post.
But that's just.
The issue is, where do they get the 8 feet? Because most deer eyes see, can clear 8 feet fairly easily.
So that's currently in our code. That just wasn't changed. That's just.
I think, can you point out that we think that that needs to be taken another look at?
Permit deer fence to 10 feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, especially if you're looking at that particular application. It means one thing if they get in your backyard and they ravage your garden, and something else if they get in your orchard and ravage your orchard.
Yeah.
The other, no fence may be constructed of barbed wire.
It's a good idea.
Say what? That's what it says here.
Yeah, I like it with concertina. I was planning it.
I don't know about that barbed wire. I mean.
That's what cows are cut in with. Cow fencing is.
Okay, yeah.
Guys, let's not confuse this with agricultural, okay, which has its whole subset of things. Obviously, you can't outlaw fences for ag uses, okay?
If this is, is this townwide, this law?
Yes.
Then.
And I don't think it was changed, Larry. I don't know.
Well, the point is, the prevailing thought in the past has been, if it's not written down, it's not allowed, and if it's written down, it can't be changed. And if we're going to make that very clear, then we should say, except for agricultural uses, so.
Yeah, because this says, does not apply to lawful farm operations in the ag zoning district. What it should say is, does not apply to lawful farm operations in the town of Lansing.
Right.
Because there are lawful farm operations outside of the ag zone that have cows. I've got four of them on my property now.
Right, I agree with you. That should be.
I mean, we're not using barbed wire fence, but.
You're not allowed to use electric fence either. Nada, nada, nada.
Use electric fence.
Well, right here, it says, it says, is it say electric fence? Electrically charged.
Yeah, we use electrically charged cows, so you're going to keep them in.
Lawful farm operations in the town of Lansing.
Yes, yes. Not in the ag zoning district. Not just in the ag zoning district.
Okay, got it.
How would you grasp?
By the way, the concertina wire, I don't think is allowed anywhere. Razor wire.
That's not allowed.
Don't get my ideas. I think razor wire is illegal anyway.
So Al, my comment is just, is if, as much as we can protect the ag land...
But...
That's, that's my concern.
What's your, what's your?
Well, don't take it out of there, but I mean, it's...
Protect the ag land as much as you can.
And then also, um, fences that are topped by barbed wire. So if you have a secure facility like a communication tower or, um, substation or something like that, those are typically topped with, um, barbed wire. And I'd say they can come for a variance.
You gonna ask the state to come for a variance?
Sure.
State's exempt on anything. They don't have to, they don't have to follow.
Because you're, um...
Actually, I kinda like that. I like the idea.
If you've got a bunch of, um, industrial scale batteries installations, they're gonna secure those.
Yes, I agree. Alright, if you have a tower, tower site's gonna be secure as well.
Right. Yeah, they're, those are all gonna be...
You're gonna have, you're gonna have barbed wire.
Especially after people are shooting up substations and...
Yeah.
You're gonna see more security. Hopefully you should see more security around those kinds of installations. Trying to think of what we could say. You mean talking about commercial, all commercial entities? Pretty much. I mean, if you had a construction yard and you had equipment in there or a salvage yard or whatever, and you have a chain link fence around it, you don't want people climbing over it, you're gonna put barbed wire in the top. I don't have an offhand solution on that.
Maybe.
I think you folks will want to think about that one and how that can look in your community. Some areas like the industrial zone where I'd say that might be entirely appropriate, but you were just talking about you want to expand the RA zone along thirty-four B to encourage tourism. I don't know. That's exactly the kind of look you're going for. Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume that the Dollar General or a restaurant's gonna do that or a sideery, but if you've got, again, a, a agricultural salvage yard or something and you don't want people going to steal the birds.
How about this, Jeff?
You're gonna secure it.
Commercial enterprises or ag enterprises that want to have the, uh, barbed wire topping their fence can come to the town for a permit.
Yeah. Because that's the same thing though. You have to have criteria by which to...
Trying to do away with special permits.
Yeah, you need, you need to have criteria.
Well, but you, you said that the commercial areas or some commercial enterprises and power, uh, say power substations require that extra security.
So what if we noted that, that the town board consider permitting, um, some kind of, you know, barbed wire top security fence for commercial entities? And then they can, they can kick that back to somebody else to think of the exact...
That's, that's acceptable.
Like somebody else, I mean, Al and myself.
Sure.
Al, get your thinking count.
We, we, we don't, we don't need razor wire, but barbed wire is a help.
Well, it could be something else in the future. It doesn't have to be barbed wire. It might be something more aesthetically pleasing than what we're thinking.
There may be something that I'm not poking out or there's other uses that allow it to, that aren't allowed.
I hope.
Well, I was thinking, I said laser, well, I was thinking of sensing devices. So if you crossed it, there would be, you know, lawns or something like that.
Okay, is anybody, anybody else moving on from fencing?
Yep. Oh, are we moving, yeah, I'd say we've said what needs to be said about the fencing.
Yes, I would as well. So moving on from fencing. Are you folks able to review this stuff online?
It was difficult.
Yeah, it was really hard though.
Yeah.
It is.
Is it actually hard to access it or hard to see?
It's hard to access.
Well, it's, it's like eight different documents or something.
Yeah.
It should be one, I mean, I didn't send it out, but you...
The PDFs were separate. They were all separate.
Okay, so it's not like we've been doing with the, uh, planning board packages on the, okay.
See, here's, here's the issue with it. We can all find it online. We can all find the PDFs on the, on the planning board section of the website. But when we want to compare page twenty-three with page four, everything kinda gets lost.
Yeah.
By the time we scroll back and then scroll forward and scroll back and scroll forward. And I've got two screens.
Yeah, hard copy really makes editing so much easier.
Right, you can add notes.
You can make notes by hand and all that stuff.
So again, I, I asked, Deb said no, but I ask again, do you guys want more time to look through this again, looking through the hard copy?
I think it'll be easier to see on hard copy.
I would take more time if there was...
You don't really have more time.
Okay, then I guess not.
Then we'll, we'll just take more time tonight.
Yeah. Okay. I don't remember what page I got to.
I do like that the parking requirements is expressly repealed. So I haven't been with you folks for your working meetings typically, okay? Is this the first time? This is not the first time you're seeing this, is it?
First time we've seen all this together?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we did, I did try, uh, look at it on the, uh, on the town website, but like I said, it's very difficult to correlate.
We've talked about many of these issues previously, but not all together.
The thing that I'm encouraged by is there's some actual stuff written down here for site plan, uh, site development standards.
Yeah.
Which is what I've been asking for for a hundred years. Well, forty.
Forty. Just forty. Just one comment on, uh, page twenty-nine where they talk about bed and breakfast, the dwelling that they describe about what a bed and breakfast is. But then they say no more than ten guest rooms are permitted. And if you're looking up to ten guests, then you've got a motel, don't you? I mean, that is a two year...
How many did the Rose Inn have? Didn't they have eight plus two over in the carriage house?
Where?
The Rose Inn.
Well, Roaks Harbor.
No, Rose Inn.
Oh, Rose Inn.
Rose Inn.
Oh, Rose Inn.
Uh, what is it now? John Thomas or John something and Elizabeth?
Yes. I guess it could be that large.
Yeah, I agree. That's not covered here. And that's where the signed up rent needs to be.
Maybe it's a small thing, but, you know, I've got many people that built B and Bs of ten bedrooms.
No, there are, what's, what's the one in skinny atlas there?
There's not many people who do B and Bs.
Yeah, V and O.
Yeah.
Shouldn't I bring up that V and O?
Ten wouldn't be that unusual, but, uh, beyond that, yeah, beyond that you're looking at a hotel.
That's not covered here at all.
I guess it's true.
Well, they have the Rose Inn terms of the, um, short, short-term rental.
Yeah, that's what...
So the, uh, the current definition of a bed and breakfast is an owner-enthusiastic residence resulting from a conversion of a one-family dwelling used to provide overnight accommodations and a morning meal to not more than ten lodgers and continuing at least three but not more than five bedrooms.
So...
So it's ten lodgers?
This says ten rooms right here.
Yeah. That's, that's, but this is what's currently in zoning, so...
Oh, I see.
So does the board want, does the board want to just keep the old definition?
Not necessarily. Because if we keep the old definition, then a couple of bed and breakfasts we have in town are no longer legal.
But they're pre-existing, not performing.
The, uh...
The ten lodgers could be...
It is not unusual for a B and B to be as big as ten rooms. I think in Braylock in Casanovia.
Yeah.
But beyond that, I got no problem with ten rooms, but beyond that, yeah.
It's a hotel.
Braylock kinda feels like a hotel.
Yeah.
Feels like a very drafty home. Very appealing to the eye. Do you sit near any windows?
No, no. Carl says Braylock for first anniversary. I stayed overnight and I gave him for the 50th. Take her out twice over fifty years.
The retail and service. That's just the definition, right? It doesn't, it's not telling me what zones are allowed in, right?
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So Jen, on, um, storage container, um, it says four, it says, "Storage containers shall not occupy off-street parking spaces." So if somebody's doing a rehab of their building, they can't temporarily put the, the waste container in the parking lot?
What section are we? Oh, you're on...
Page thirty-five. Uh, temporary uses permit required storage container down to four, so not occupy off-street parking spaces. You follow my lines up there? You're gonna remodel a building or...
Yeah, yeah, during, during construction.
Yeah.
It should be allowed.
That's what I think.
Not, not as a permanent.
Right, exactly.
It says required though, so does that mean?
The size of your...
Well, then temporary uses are allowed.
Yeah.
Storage container. So since this is a temporary use, it should be allowed to be stored in a, um, parking lot.
I would think so. I don't know what the word required, that, that term required is.
Required for the size of the enterprise.
The required parking spots. So if they have like a site plan and it's a, and it's a parking spot.
And it says they have to have so many parking spots.
Well, again, this is temporary during construction. Oh, he's just asking what time, what, what required meant.
Okay.
Wasn't arguing for or against it.
Right, right. But I, I just wonder if, if that should, if that's appropriate. If it's, if it's temporary use and you're doing a rehab, you should be able to use a couple parking spots.
Well, as long as, as long as you have adequate parking on the, on the site for workers or maybe you have adequate parking off-site for workers that's not like the side of the highway, um, but yeah. What if you left it to the discretion of the code enforcement?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
Okay. Which says for extenuating circumstances and/or limited time periods. Yeah, during construction would be a limited time period.
And then the other one that...
As long as you didn't get a code officer who's like, oh, no, that's not allowed.
And then a portable fire extinguisher is required to be mounted in each storage container. So if you've got a dumpster, you have to have a fire extinguisher inside it.
Well, a storage container isn't a dumpster.
Oh, it isn't, okay.
That'd be trash. No, that, that makes perfect sense.
It does? Okay.
Yeah. Well, I mean, think, think about it. The code for residential home basically says you can't have a storage closet underneath a set of stairs or, you know, it has to be, um, fire rocked and fire taped. And actually any stairs have to have fire rocked underneath them so that you can escape. Because what do people store there? Things that are flammable. Today, flammables would include things like, what if somebody's storing a, um, a battery charger with a lithium ion battery in it? Those things can go, right? So...
Your hoverboard.
Exactly. So it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, you know, kerosene or paint thinner or something like that. But, I mean, you could see these kinds of things would be put in a storage container, so it wouldn't be unusual for them to potentially start a fire. Isn't that some thinking? It doesn't, probably doesn't say what size.
Yeah, it does further down. Next, yes, it says two and a half pound or twelve.
Okay. Yep, two and a half pound handheld compatible with the materials being stored unless it's a lithium ion battery because no fire extinguisher is, um, compatible with that. Couple thousand gallons of water maybe.
Cheese.
They can re, those things can re-ignite three, four times. So scary.
Anything else, folks? You want more time to go through?
So I see they did a good job with garage sale. Being very, being very express with, um, duration. Three consecutive days, three times per year.
Some people have a hunk on them.
Well, you can always go to your neighbor and say, if you don't give me a good deal on that, they'll wring you out. The code officer shut me down.
The one question I had is, um, page seventeen, for site plan and new procedures. Number two, um, sketch plan conference with planning staff are what appropriate for the board as a whole? What makes it appropriate for the board as a whole?
I had that same question.
Great minds.
Yep. Well, I think it would be pretty time-consuming if every sketch plan came to the board first.
Oh, I wasn't thinking, I see, yeah. But it would be nice to have, I like the sketch plans.
Yeah.
I find them more helpful, even though when we're, when we get a complete plan, it has to be changed. I got a lot of tinder for the wood stove. But I hate to burn all those...
I just thought that. That's just, that's just right.
They might articulate with what purpose it is.
Yeah, I would think that has some kind of level of complexity.
Yeah.
Or maybe it has something to do with aesthetics.
I know, because we're so good with aesthetics. Actually, I have got the compliments on the shade trees must be the caliber of two inches.
I haven't bought it yet. Is it, is it all up?
The blue one. Oh, not the, not the one on thirty-four B.
No, no, not the new one on thirty-four B, yeah.
The one on thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay. Yeah, I think we should have had more landscaping on the south side though on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's pretty.
It's actually used a lot. Every time I go by, there's, there's cars in the parking lot.
Well, the one over here that's, there's no...
I try to avoid them.
No, not at all.
It's too crowded in them.
Yeah, isn't it amazing how much stuff they have?
We just have some issues with them following through on their drainage premises, however, the one in North Lansing. John, John had been dealing with that. Well, there won't be any more complaints now because, uh, Rob is dead.
The neighbor with the horses?
Yeah.
Do we think tree, two inch tree dimensions are big enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a pretty good sized tree.
Okay.
If you get, if you get it too awfully much bigger, then they're gonna be dying of shock.
Okay.
It's hard to get...
Some people plant them there. Yeah.
You don't want the one, one stick?
No.
Eighteen inch tall horse fifty up? Not that fast. Whether two inch caliber trees were...
Whether two-inch caliber trees were appropriate.
That's, I am.
Deviations.
The, yeah.
I'm glad we have something, because twigs mean, uh, that's not a tree.
Twigs don't cut it, yeah.
I don't think they should be less than that, do you, John?
I mean, if the circumstances were less than that, we would be fine. I wouldn't want to pull a lot bigger than that, but.
Oh, I know that there's.
Largest, I've.
Where, where are we on that?
Um, page forty.
Forty.
Largest I've transplanted successfully was about eight inches.
Whoa.
Oh, shame trees. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, no two inches.
John, do you have a sense of when darkened sky lighting in the town came into effect? And the reason I ask is if you look on Trippam Road at the, um, Tompkins Trust Company ATM that's close to Prueville Road, they have a light pole with four LED lights that are not like this, they're like this.
Yeah.
And it's pretty blinding for the whole area.
I don't know, we'll see. Sometimes sections of code are actually dedicated.
That was my feeling was that that facility is not that old, it's probably less than five years old.
Yes.
It's not too bad that some of these things can't be addressed.
Again, that.
And lighting, I don't understand because that, you know, why are we.
I, I am happy that, uh.
We can, after this, we can bring.
Or have a site board and, uh, fuel and everything, the buildings and the fencing and all that really blocks the light for the neighbors to the, to the east, the neighbors south across the street. The one neighbor went and put up a huge fence and they really didn't need to, unless they just don't want to look at the buildings. But it was light, it was, it was directly. No, they're not. They're very unobtrusive. They.
Dean, I don't, I don't see anything off, you know.
You don't have to make a direct appointment, you know, you just.
Guys, how are we doing here? Are we?
We're good, I think. All right, everybody's good?
Could I, could I sum this up just to make sure that I've caught everything you've spoken about?
Sure.
Yes, okay, so, uh, proposing to, um, follow the ad committee's recommendations and to move every parcel from, that is contiguous to thirty-four B, from the county line to the school into the RA district.
That's what the ad committee said.
Okay, so we're, we're proposing that.
I would, I would say except for ones that are already in the R two. Looks like there's maybe a couple there in the R two.
Unless in R two?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could make it clear that, uh, as Tom said, maybe there'd be some room for negotiation, but we want to be fair, because there are some fairly large lots that are included that are on the east side of thirty-four B.
Okay.
Consistent.
Yeah, consistent. Better than fair.
So, yeah, I will, uh, so now permitting deer fence up to ten feet in height?
Yep.
All right? Changing the barbed wire provision there, I got it written down to seventy dash forty point five E, so that it's moved to lawful operation, oh, in the town of Lansing, not just agricultural.
Yeah, zone, correct.
Uh, and, and to consider allowing it to top security.
Security fences were appropriate. So that would give discretion.
Leaving some discretion for the code enforcement officer to allow storage, temporary storage containers?
Yes.
In, in parking areas?
Yes.
And then some sort of standard for when it's appropriate for the planning board to have sketch plan review, sketch plan for site plan? And that is it.
But I think that, that can be, that should be your call. When you, you have, there's a, when that comes in, you know whether it's, if it's, if it's just a minor.
That's how it's written, that's sort of vaguely how it's written now, but Deb brought it up, so.
Right.
Do you want to leave it as is, or?
No, if you want to clarify, that's fine, but okay.
John, with regard to Dean's question, uh, I, don't you think it would be appropriate to, uh, place some maximum value, uh, temperature value on the, on the lighting? Because, uh, we're in, we're in a position where the county comes back and asks for even, uh, more or lower temperature than we've been asking for.
Yeah, they're asking for twenty-eight hundred. And we now have developers, at least the Danny, saying, hey, we can't get anything under three that's gonna work with our security.
And we've been using three, right?
We have been using three.
So you wanted to, is it twenty-eight or twenty-seven?
Or twenty-seven, is what they're.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, so the, uh, yeah, you want to make that recommendation, twenty-seven hundred CCT?
Well, like Dean just said.
Well, I don't, I take that with a grain, big grain of salt.
I take it with a big grain of salt. We, we need, we need to know what is possible, because we're being told by some applicants that it's not possible to go below three thousand.
I don't believe.
And others are very, very happy to do it, so.
Well, and that is a difficult question, because, um, you know, the county has their recommendations for, you know, and they have their reasons for them. But is it appropriate on, on every site? I don't, I don't know. That's what this board is for. And right now, you're, you have the, you have the latitude to decide whether or not you think it's appropriate. And, um, if, if you need to go contrary to the county's recommendations, you can do so with a super majority. So that forces you to come in and it's some kind of consensus. And already do that. So there are instances where it may not make sense. I'm not saying that the dandy mark makes sense, but if you have a bank and they, and they're required to have security lighting.
Well, again, you know, I, I, I want the bank, whoever, their engineer or whatever, is to, to come to me and demonstrate how every security system that they would consider requires three thousand degree Kelvin or more.
Or how they're, you know, how they're complying with some regulation. And I understand that, Dean, but I'm just saying to provide you with the latitude.
Right.
So that folks don't have to go get a variance.
Mm-hmm.
But you can certainly suggest that there be a max to comply with what the county is going for, since you see it all the time. And then if somebody did need a variance, they could prove that they had to meet some other standard. So that, that would take some of the headache off of your lap. I can appreciate that. So I said, I definitely see the merit in that. What do you folks think?
I think we're, we're fine then with this.
What do we make, do we make the lighting recommendation?
I think it's good to have it read down.
I think as well that it is. It just, it tells the developer right up front what we're looking for.
Can we get a show of hands, all in favor of recommending? Okay. Unanimous. Okay.
Okay, folks, we good? All right. All right, we good?
Motion to adjourn?
So.
Uh, we, we're gonna, we're gonna talk real quickly about the, we never finished on the, um, the trail on Jonas Falls and that, real quickly, just then we can get on here. Um, I spoke with, um, with the Parks and the Parks said they were interested in getting a permanent easement. They said that the trail does need work, but it's not something that would be, uh, it's not, it's not impossible. In other words, it would, could easily be repaired at a, at a low cost. So it's not the cost.
It's more than just labor.
It, I guess, whatever it may be. So the Parks was interested in it. And we had talked about it last meeting. I think Tom is interested. Deb, you're part of the Parks. Have you got, you haven't had any meetings or any discussion on that, correct?
No. I'm, I'm not even asking you anymore.
Okay, oh, you're not, okay.
Though my experience of the trail is you get one flood and most of the work gets, uh, wiped out, wiped out.
Yeah, Larry?
When that trail was first put in, I was involved in, uh, going down, walking the trail, uh, setting it up, you know, just taking a look at the layout. And, uh, that is a tough trail. I mean, I could walk then, I was having a hard time with it. Because there are some spots where there, there are pretty good drops between one step and another. And there was, uh, there was no intent to do any improvement of the trail, because the thought was to leave it with a bit of a challenge. But a couple of things need to be made clear to me. If the town is gonna have any liability for having, having that trail on private property, uh, open under the auspices of, uh, the town wanting trails, uh, then I've got some, I've got a problem with that. Because that trail is not suited for every level of, uh, individual.
But, but is it feasible to make it suitable? In other words, is it physically?
How much ti, how much money does the trail committee want to spend on private land?
My con, my quick comment to Pat, he said it was feasible, so do we want more con, do you guys want more comments from Pat?
Well, I may have a suggestion. In that, you know, perhaps the board just seek, uh, easement from the, from the developer rather than, I mean, are you, are you thinking of requiring the developer to?
No.
Build a trail and dedicate it to the town?
No, no, just, just getting a permanent easement. And so then the town, if and when the town had money, time, energy, effort, they could go in and make that trail, uh, suitable. In other words, now's the time to get a permanent easement to that, I think.
That, and we can talk with Guy about that and see what the, you know, if there's any potential pitfalls to that. Or maybe even if there was some kind of a rider on it that said if the, if a trail wasn't developed in X number of years, the easement would extinguish, something like that, so that the, the owner wasn't permanently.
Deprived.
Deprived, thank you.
Tom, what do you, what do you think?
Well, there's actually better access on the, on the other side of the gorge, but that's not available, but it's a hamper stand. As far as, uh, trail liability, I don't think, uh, people would win in court on a trail issue that they found broke their leg or something. That's.
Yeah, you take, it's at your own risk.
Yeah, it's very hard for somebody to sue a town over a trail.
So, so I, I think your point is well taken. I think if, if the developer will grant the town an easement, but not, we're not, we're not saying that he has to make the improvements or put the trail in. Just giving us the town the legal ability to put a trail in if and when it's appropriate.
Yes, because the town can then decide if it's, you know, hit a tipping point when it can, if it wants the trail, if it feels the trail is safe, if they can afford to develop the trail.
That, that's a town road there, correct?
Yes.
The short circle.
Yes, it's already, yes, there is.
So I'm just thinking in terms of, that gives the town the ability to have more control in terms of signage, like. You know, when you're between common land community and, uh, Six Mile Creek Vineyard, the number of people who park, you know, and walk down into the gorge where there's no trespassing.
I mean, there is sort of a lot to consider, which could, you know, really, um, I don't know that it could be hammered out any kind of time that, um, is reasonable for development of this site. I mean, this development isn't proposing a common trail network for the use of its own residents, you know, or any sort of connection like that. It's proposing a trail that goes down to the bottom of a creek that's lots of other landowners abut, okay? And they may not want to be encouraging people on their property, because there may be some liability there. Whether or not you win in court, doesn't mean that you defray the cost of offending yourself.
But I think right now is the time to have that conversation.
Other, other issues as well are, are, you know, does the fire department in this area, do they have the ability to rescue people? Is there a, is there, you know, is there sufficient equipment? Is there sufficient access?
How is parking gonna be handled?
Well, that, that's, that's, we mentioned that if, if there is gonna be a stormwater site, is it possible to include, um, a parking area on that stormwater site that the town is gonna own or occupy or use?
Or now, in this particular instance, we reserve space for it, right?
Right, right, exactly.
The other question is, would that easement be open-ended or should it have a sunset?
My feeling is that it should have a sunset, but that's for this board to decide.
I, well, I, I agree with you.
The original, uh, easement, there was an easement.
There was a license.
Actually, there had a two-year, um, lifespan, and then it was never renewed.
Wow, two years off.
But that was, I think it was, it wasn't renewed more because of neglect, not because anybody didn't want to rebuild it.
All right, so what we need to do, we need to do a little further investigation, whether it's talking to Pat at Parks, whether it's talking with Guy and as well as talking with the developer, letting him know that there, there is some interest there in that. Permanent easement be acquired, okay?
Yep.
All right, anything else, folks?
I, I do have one thing. Uh, since we've lost CJ on the staff, that significantly hampers the amount of people that we have to be able to do work. Um, I am proposing to only have working meetings of this board, sort of as needed. If there's something like, like this zoning update that comes up or something in particular, I don't want to just. Sometimes I like to have a night without meetings as well, folks, so. Tom will work zoning, we're playing more. Uh, if, you know, as, as much as possible, I'd like to just kind of keep us to our one meeting a month. Obviously, if something comes up, we can go back, okay? If we can, if we can fill the position, we can come back, but I need to, I need to sort of focus my department on sort of core functions as much as possible for the time being.
Uh, one of the things, John, I think that we need to heads up on, now that we're coming out of COVID, is try to get us all, um, all of our CEUs before like November, December.
Yeah.
So when you know that stuff's coming up and opportunities, you probably should try to jump on that stuff sooner.
And, and I would like to do the, I would like it, someone to come in and give the, it's, it's a fit. In other words, we all meet at a working meeting, someone gives a presentation instead of getting on the internet, having to take the class on the internet, take an exam. I'd rather just take it, get it all done at a, at a working meeting.
Okay.
We've done that in the past.
I think that's a nice idea.
Yeah, you wouldn't necessarily have to be there. I said, you wouldn't necessarily have to be there.
Yeah, or, you know, I mean, like, you know, coming in for a particular purpose is not the same as having a standing meeting every time as well, you know?
True.
Well, for instance, if there was a particular issue that we were working on, that we needed the time, we wouldn't necessarily need you.
Right.
I mean, we always need you, John, okay?
Thanks, Larry.
But just as long as we could get into the building and, and have a place to go face to face and we could, uh, you know, we could turn in a recording to, uh, to Heather and stuff like that.
Sounds great.
Okay, folks, football game's on, I think, right?
Not college.
It's not now?
No, the body's not even cold yet.
Championship games.
No, it's college.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She has.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, folks.